All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's go ahead and bring the regular meeting of the city council to order for February 28th. Let the record reflect a starting time of 7:01. Please note that the mayor has actually lifted the mask mandate within all city buildings after conversations with our county's health department, as well as some changing guidance from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. But of course, for those folks that feel safer and more comfortable with their masks on, we certainly invite you to wear those masks. In any event, with that being said, Clerk, sorry, would you please take the role?
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
President.
Councilmember Spatafor.
President.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
We have a presence, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much.
All right, we're next to meditation and pledge allegiance.
Councilman Spatafor.
I know we're all probably thinking the same thing, but I would ask that as we reflect and have a moment of meditation, we keep the people of Ukraine in our thoughts as they're struggling with the war that's being waged right now and the suffering that's happening there, please.
Thank you. Are there others? Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. One of the volunteers who worked on the River Trail, Al Koska, passed away last week. Al, in fact, while he was in hospice at home with his family, was concerned that his partner get a new partner so that they can be out on the River Trail. He also served at the airport as a volunteer there as well, and when the congregate meals were at Salvation Army, he also worked there. So if we could remember his family at this time, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others? Seeing none, if you would rise and join me in a moment of meditation, I'd appreciate
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, then next we are to special ceremonies and presentations.
Sure, and so we actually have a number of presentations, that is why we have an almost full gallery tonight, which is fantastic. And the first presentation is actually the introductions of new Lansing police officers and the social worker supervisor. And for a quick introduction, I'm actually going to turn the floor over to Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. When we saw on Facebook a number of the new police officers that were being sworn in, one of the things that we talked about was trying to make sure that on a more regular basis that we brought the new officers in so that they could introduce themselves not only to council members, but to the public, and have an opportunity to tell us a little bit about themselves. And so with that, I would invite Chief Sosby to come on down, and then he can have his officers come with him. And we also have the social worker supervisor that has recently been hired that will be with them. So we are very honored to have this fine group of young men and women with us this evening.
And Chief Sosby, you have the floor. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, President. Good evening, councilmembers and members of the community. Thank you for allowing us some time to introduce a few of my newest members of the Lansing Police Department. As always, on behalf of the men and women of the department, I would like to thank you for your support in recognizing the need to fully staff our police department. With the many concerns in the world today, one thing Lansing residents do not need to worry about is the commitment of safety by their mayor and their city council. As challenging times continue, Lansing residents are reassured public safety is a top priority. And these new faces show your support and commitment. To our officers and social worker, thank you for stepping up and answering the call to serve and protect the citizens of Lansing. Law enforcement as a profession has been challenging recently, yet your commitment and passion for public safety does not waver. Thank you for becoming one of the Capitol City's finest. And I would like to have each of the officers and social worker members step up, introduce themselves, say where they currently are assigned, and briefly share what they, why they chose to be on Lansing Police Department. Thank you.
Hello, I'm a police officer. I'm currently in the Central Patrol Division. I'm a recent citizen of Lansing, and I love serving the city. I worked for the first few years prior to leaving the city. So once I came back, it felt right to continue to get back to the community that has given so much to me and to all the people that I've been with through the years from middle school to high school to college. So I love the city and I'm going to go back to the community because it's always helped me.
Hi, my name is Waldbonkey. I'm a resident of Lansing City. I became a Lansing police officer in the youth program, the cadet program. I was taught by other Lansing officers who are very passionate about serving the city and all of you. That's because I work with the community.
Hello, I'm Richard Boynton. I work for patrol. I currently work on the road by used to work in the jail and I really love it. And I'm not an office service individual, but I really love serving the community and I really enjoy the family and it's great to live with.
That makes sense.
I'm Tyler Stover. I'm currently in the leadership for patrol. I always knew that I wanted to work for a larger department with a lot of opportunities. And Lansing definitely provides that, but I came out with it right along in watching the officers and how they interact with people and the dignity and respect they treat you with, and I really stood by it and I wanted to work for Lansing.
Hello, my name is Baron Cenk, and the reason I want to become a police is I want to protect and serve the community and also as an immigrant, I want to become British because my immigrant community and the locals.
Good afternoon, my name is David Daley. I was born and raised in Lansing area, moved out to California, worked for four years for the LAPD. Decided to come back to Lansing to be close to the family, and it's a really unique opportunity to be able to work where I grew up, so I'm excited to be here and yeah, happy to be able to serve this as a Lansing.
Hi, I'm Travis Kane. I'm in the patrol as well. I chose to work for LPD because of the large resources that we have, and I arrived along just made more comfortable with all the officers around me and how they interact with me, so it just felt like the right choice.
Awesome, and I'm the odd one of the bunch. I am Jessica Martin. I'm the police social work supervisor. I came to LPD after nearly 17 years at a local law enforcement agency as a lieutenant, but I got my social work degree in 2012, and that's really where my heart and my passion lies. It was a little confusing with the dual licensure, being both a police officer and a social worker at that other agency, and when this position opened up for the police social work supervisor, I thought, what better way can I continue to serve the community that I've been serving for nearly 20 years in a different and new capacity? And the field of police social work is an emerging field of social work practice. I do a lot of teaching and training across the state and nation with tri-county crisis intervention team. I'm the co-chair of the board for the tri-county crisis intervention team, and I teach for the School of Social Work Continuing Education Trauma Certificate Program. And so those areas, crisis intervention and trauma-informed response, I knew that I could put that skill set to work as the police social work supervisor, and we're very excited to continue to expand our police social work team at LPD and work alongside all of these wonderful officers to continue to serve and protect this great city. Thank you.
Before you leave, hold on just one second, I wanted to make sure I provided an opportunity for any council members that might have comments or remarks for our new officers or our new supervisor. Councilman Garza.
Thanks, Council President. I just want to say congratulations, you guys. Keep up the great work protecting our community, and I look forward to meeting all you individually soon. Thank you.
Vice President Wood, and then Councilwoman Spitzley.
I just want to thank you. I think one of the things that I heard here repeatedly was anywhere from our cadet program, which was successful to the ride-alongs that many of you participated in, made a difference. So I think that speaks volumes to the officers that we currently have, and we appreciate the fact that you are going to be part of the family, so thank you.
Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to welcome you guys as well. I'm so proud of the group that we have. I really, what you said about, you know, touching base and reaching the immigrant population, I'm a softie, so I kind of touched my heart there. But, you know, as Councilmember, as Vice President Wood said, I mean, you talked about the cadet program, the ride-alongs, and so those are all the things that I think are great to get people involved in the police department, but also make sure you stay in the community, in the community that you serve. And so I know that you guys will be successful, and I'm just so happy you're here, so welcome.
Thank you. Really quickly, I guess I'd just say that mutual trust, strong relationships, so incredibly important when we talk about police department and then the communities they serve. And we know that you rely on the community's members to, you know, participate in identifying issues with regard to crime and identifying solutions, things of that nature. But, you know, it's incredibly important that our community members also feel safe with you, comfortable with you, and that believe that you have essentially the values reflected within you that are, you know, so incredibly important to them. And I think this is a huge piece to that process, the embracing of, the acknowledging, the introduction. So I think, I think this is something we should do from here on out with, with our newly hired officers. And again, goal, when you talk about community engagement, you know, I know a number of you won't be necessarily in the CPO division to begin with, but the more you can do to actually communicate with those that you serve, certainly, I think we'll all be better for it. So we appreciate you and your future service to this, to the city. Okay? Thanks so much, we appreciate you. Thank you. All right, next we are going to bring down our state representative, Ms. Sarah Anthony from the Michigan House 68th District. We really appreciate, obviously, Sarah being here today. The importance of city and state cooperation, yep, come on down, has really only been reinforced during my time on council. I will say that we are contacted quite regularly as city council members. I think we are, you know, maybe the most visible, sometimes we seem the most accessible, but candidly, a lot of the things that come our way are not necessarily within our jurisdiction or within our purview. And so we spend a lot of time working with, as an example, our state legislators, a lot of, a lot of time advocating for issues that matter with regard to our constituents, to the state legislature. And I will be quite candid, it would be, I should say, it is very easy for state legislators to kind of just stand behind the curtain, work quietly, and it sometimes might, again, be a little bit easier, a little bit more comfortable. Some of those folks are courageous enough to step out, you know, from behind the curtain and truly let folks know not only what their responsibilities are, how they can be accessed, et cetera, but they create those opportunities. And Sarah certainly is one of those individuals, so we appreciate her in her regular coffee hours, the fact that she is accessible to all of us, and the fact that she, I mean, she's very, very, which we appreciate, very active on social media, and has always demonstrated a willingness to come before this body and share updates. I remember Joan Bower used to do this, do the same thing, obviously after Joan, Andy used to do some of those similar things, and now you are doing that, and we certainly appreciate that. So with that being said, I'm going to turn the floor over to you. We do in fact have a presentation. I don't know, did you communicate with city staff? I think what we're going to do, as opposed to having you click through, we'll actually have them click through. So just let them know when you need to go to the next slide, okay? Thanks so much.
Sounds good. Can you hear me okay? Awesome. Councilmember President Hussein, thank you so much for the opportunity, esteemed council. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the space. I feel at home here. I used to do presentations, it was on Zoom last year, so it's good to see you all in person. Some of you, this is my first time seeing you on the dais, you look good. Everyone looks sharp, so thank you. Oh, that's it, all right. Well, hoodies next time, so. Thank you all for having me. I am joined by the legend that is Kelly Dean. And at the end of our presentation, on the legislative side, we also want to talk to you about something that we are co-chairing that is near and dear to our hearts, which is the Lansing School Bond Proposal. So just a spoiler alert. Now, I will not be a typical politician and take too much time, but I wanted to make sure you all knew what we were up to recently in the Capitol, right across the street. And then obviously, if you all had any questions, I hope I would be able to have some space to answer. So with that, we can go to the first slide. All right, so we have been very busy. I stay busy in the legislature, both in the community as well as in the policy front. So I won't read every single piece of this PowerPoint, but we have a record number of funding that is coming to our state. It is no secret, when the governor did her State of the State address earlier this year in January, and since has done her executive budget recommendations, there's a lot of money. And a part of my role as your state representative for the majority of the city of Lansing and Lansing Township is to fight for every single dollar that we have access to, to make sure that every corner of our community has the resources they need, not just to survive, but to thrive. You have seen some of the investments that we have fought really hard for over the past couple of months, and really years. Today, the mayor and I were at a ribbon cutting for our new McLaren building. We were intimately involved from every corner of that building to ensure that those resources are going to be allocated with fidelity. And not just the new building, we also were laser focused to ensure that there would be services maintained in the existing building on the Green Lawn campus. Today, we had a coffee hour, Councilwoman Spitzley was able to join us, and we talked about that investment in that, on the property on Green Lawn. Now, this is maybe a year and a half, two years ago, when Senator Hertel and I brought several of you into the office, I think Councilwoman Wood and others were a part of that conversation to decide what would happen with that space. Well, mental health services for young people will happen in that space, partnering with Child and Family Services will happen in that space. We did not want blight and disinvestment in South Lansing. You all know that I am a South Lansing child, born and raised, and so while we're thinking about investments in downtown and other parts of our region, we cannot shy away from investing in our neighborhoods. Also, you know, a great point of pride, the $2 million we were able to secure last year for the Performing Arts Center. These are things in working in concert with the council, as well as with our mayor, to make sure that when I'm going into the Capitol, I have a list of priorities to fight for from the city. So this is a shameless plug. You all know the process, that first our governor puts out her executive recommendations, and then from there, the legislature starts to negotiate. We put forth our priorities, both in the House and the Senate. Now, our senator is Senator Curtis Hertel, and I'm your state representative, and we work in concert to fight for every penny for our city, for our community. So over the next few weeks and months, I'll be having conversations with you all, working closely with the mayor, closely with the council, as well as our townships, our school boards, any and everyone who we can say, what can we do to help you fill the needs? This is a time for us to dream. This is not just about survival. If we think that this will be a generational change, that we have generational funds, we need to be asking for what we need, not necessarily just for what we think we need to survive. So that's where we are in the budget process right now, is coming up with our list of asks in order for us to start to negotiate and work hard for those asks. You can go to the next slide. I think we may, oh, okay, that is the right slide. Thank you. Councilmember, or Council President Hussein talked about accessibility, and that is extremely important to our office. Whether it's been virtual or in-person, we've had in-person coffee hours, virtual coffee hours, to make sure that we stay connected to the community. We will continue to always have a virtual option, because we know that for a lot of reasons, that helps with accessibility. Folks with mobility issues, folks who are still immune compromised, or just feeling more comfortable that they can attend a coffee hour on their lunch break or in the morning. If you don't want to have your camera on, you can keep your rollers in, or do whatever you're doing with that camera off on the Zoom. But we are going to continue to have those coffee hours, and those are a way for us to stay connected, to provide a legislative update, but more importantly, to hear what's happening in our community. So we just had one this morning, and we will be posting our March Coffee Hour on our website. So shameless plug, if you've never been to our website or not connected to our Facebook, feel free to do so. We don't bombard you with information, but it is sound information so you can stay connected with state government. We also had the opportunity last week to host the Lansing Catholic Central Football Team as they recently won the state championship, and we were able to bring the coaching staff, as well as the students and parents, to celebrate in the Speaker's Library. It was a great event. Our mayor was able to join us, as well as regional leaders across, across the region. So it was a great event, and I am hoping and rooting that our Lansing schools will also be state champions, so that I can host them in the Capitol as well. We can go to the next slide. Now, we are ending Black History Month, this is the final day, but for those of us who celebrate 365, we will continue to celebrate the accomplishments of African Americans here locally, as well as across the state and nation. And in March, we'll be celebrating both Women's History Month, as well as March's Reading Month. So I'll be contacting you all for a couple of fun challenges. One thing that many of us do is go to our schools across the region and read to students. It is so important for them to see us, to see readers and leaders in our community. So I encourage you, if you'd like to join me, my doors are always open, you can tag along. Full disclosure, I have a track record of dancing with the students, just add, ask Commissioner Todd Tennis. So if you don't want to dance, you probably don't want to come with me, but however you want to embrace March's Reading Month, it's totally up to you. But another challenge we're going to have this year is focusing on adult literacy. So this is really important. The fact that there's so many men and women in our community who cannot read, the level of services and resources that you don't have access to without the ability to read is really important. So we're going to be challenging adults across the region to, you know, plug into resources to help them fill that gap. So tune into my social media for more information there. We also will be continuing our Youth Advisory Council. So many of us, I know, were on Junior Board of Education, I think. Councilman Jackson, were you on the junior board? Something like that? Yeah, so many of us got our start by connecting and plugging into different boards and councils. I know the Waverly School Board, the junior board, is that it?
The Waverly Middle School Student Council.
Student Council has joined us this evening in talking about leadership development. I launched, when I first came into office, the Youth Advisory Council as a way to connect young people with public service, not just to give them exposure, but also to help me formulate policy that would reflect youth voice. This year, we're going to try something different. We're going to have a Youth Advisory Council, a summit that for two days exposes young people to local government and state government. So if you know a young person who might be interested in learning more about state government, please have them reach out to our office. The application process is on our social media, as well as our legislative page. Next month, in partnership with our other Lansing state representative, Kara Hope, we will be hosting two events related to expungement. First, we'll have a virtual town hall on March 9th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., and this will be co-hosted with myself, Representative Kara Hope, and our Attorney General Dana Nessel, as a way to let folks know about the expungement process and what it takes to actually clean up some of those records. The legislature has been very progressive in helping to formulate policy to expunge records, and so we want to bring those resources here to Lansing. So we'll have an informational town hall on the 9th, followed by an expungement fair at Cooley Law School on March 23rd from 4:00 to 6:00, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. So I would encourage you all, as, you know, constituents, people in our neighborhoods, family members, to come out to that expungement fair and learn about ways that you can help set the record straight and get those records cleaned up. Next slide, please. So the majority of our office is really broken up in really two big buckets. One, it's the policy work, crafting bills, crafting legislation, fighting for appropriations. But the second piece of that work really is being a community resource. As the president mentioned, it would be easy for us to say, well, just go to the local folks, and they'll help you with those unemployment or roads and all of those kind of nitty-gritty pieces. But Mark Lawrence knows, one of the core functions of our office is being the bridge between state government and real people, helping folks with unemployment, with housing issues, food insecurity, working with state agencies, honestly, cutting through bureaucratic red tape for constituents. So if you have any issues related to state government, or things that you believe we could be helpful with, please reach out to our office. Our contact information is on the last slide, but if anyone's watching, obviously calling us, emailing us, you know, going on our social media, there's no wrong way to engage with our office. As the Lansing state representative, we're not shy about having folks literally just walking into our office, and we're okay with that, because we know that there's no wrong way to engage with us to make sure that we're serving you. Next slide. Now, I'll speed through this, but just know that I'm really busy on the legislative side. In addition to the policy work related to the appropriations, we are laser focused on a few things, making sure that we're bridging the gap for students. So again, I know we have students in the audience, we recently introduced House Bill 4630 that relates to requiring teachers to spend at least one hour of training or education on bullying prevention. We also introduced a House resolution declaring youth violence in Michigan as a public health epidemic. You all have been alive and in Lansing for the past two years, and you know that these acts of violence, particularly around our young people, has reached, you know, level critical, right? And so we need to name the thing, and I just believe that this is a public health epidemic, and as soon as you name the thing, hopefully support and resources will follow that. We also introduced a bill to require insurers to fund mental health and behavioral health the same, to have parity there. When we talk about healthcare, it's not just about your physical health, it's also mental health, and we know that that is a huge need in our community and across the state. And then you can always go to our website to look at all of the bills that we have introduced, that we have cosponsored and sponsored, because we really have a wide range of policies that we try to champion across, in our time. Next slide. So on the horizon, we're going to be partnering with a few legislators to tackle student-borrower protections, also some consumer data protection acts, as well as revising the process for setting speed limits. Now, the president knows that we have been working very closely to address speed limits in Lansing. On our coffee hour this morning, we asked folks, what do you think the speed limit is on Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard? And although it's probably somewhere, depending on where you are, between 35 and 40, folks are going 80 and 90 and 100 miles an hour. Down a street in which there are commercial properties, there are homes, we want it to be walkable and bikeable and safe. It is not safe. We text back and forth about every time there's a deadly crash, every time that there is an incident, it is level critical, as I keep saying. And so we are working to revise that process, because right now, there's not a clean process to lower the speed limits on these types of roads. But we want to make sure that we can keep our residents safe. So we've been partnering very closely with council to ensure that we can finally clean up that process and hopefully make that a safer road for everyone. Now, I am going to pause there on the legislative side to talk about a project that's near and dear to my heart. I am honored to be a co-chair with Kelly Dean on a project that we want to make sure that Lansing residents know about, because there will be a, something coming in terms of a, was it a millage? A millage? Yeah, a millage that's coming before us, and we want to tell you all about it. A millage that's coming before us, and we want to tell you all about it, not necessarily advocating, although I'm pretty sure you'll know where we stand by the end of our remarks.
Thank you, Representative Anthony. No surprise how honored I am to be co-chair after listening to that great report that you've just heard from the representative. Congratulations, Sarah, for all your hard work. I'm Kelly Dean, owner of Dean Transportation. Our headquarters is on Aurelius Road in Lansing. We're just celebrating our 60th year here in Lansing, and we service about 150 school districts across the state of Michigan, but Lansing is our home. I am very honored, after spending 14 years as a teacher and administrator in the Lansing schools, to have gone in the bus business and now get this opportunity to be co-chair with Representative Anthony for something that can be as important as any activity that we can all participate in on May the 3rd. There's a millage vote that is coming, and the most important thing that I want you to learn, to know and learn, as well as the citizens of Lansing, is that this is a zero-mill bond. That means, zero means zero. There will be no increase in taxes, and this bond will be a 25-year bond that will generate $130 million. $130 million. And I'll let Representative tell you about the particulars and how this is truly another game-changing effort on behalf of Lansing. It's a continuation of what really started in 2016 as we move forward, and it's only good news for Lansing.
That's right. So, read, no new taxes. Read my lips. Should I say that? Anytime a politician says that, it's like, they lying. Okay. No. So this bond is really important. Whether you have kids in our district, or you just love our students, you love our schools, this is very important. Quite honestly, we have so much aging infrastructure in the school district. And so this bond will help to fund critical infrastructure. When we say that, what do we mean? One, Sexton needs some love. Now, I'm saying this as a Viking, okay? But we have seen investments in Eastern, we've seen investments at Everett. Now it's Sexton's turn. So they're going to have some critical infrastructure, helping to update the facilities at Sexton. We'll also see investments, really, in four elementary schools. And I always get the four wrong, so Kelly, you're going to have to help me out with the four. But we're going to redo, revamp four elementary schools. And then finally, these dollars will also go to help with heating and cooling in all of our schools, because the reality is, whether it gets really warm or it's really cold in the buildings, kids need an environment that is safe and comfortable for them to learn. So whether you have kids in the school district, or you just know that kids are the best investment that we can ever pour into, we want to make sure that all of our buildings are up to par. We have world-class teachers, we have world-class students, we have world-class parents. We need world-class buildings to make sure that learning is happening. So what are those for, again?
Sir, there are four elementary schools that are at the end of their life, literally. Maybe it was many years ago they were at the end of their life. And they are Sheridan Road to the north, Willow to the central north, Mount Hope School, and Luton School. So those four schools were chosen with a tremendous amount of input. This was nothing, this has been studied for many years. There was a lot of community input, and those four schools will literally be retired. They will come down in brand-new, brand-new 21st century schools be put in their place, along with Sexton. And I just want to say again, we've got students in Lansing that are working in buildings right now with no air conditioning. Not too many places we can all travel in our day that's not air-conditioned, and this will really enhance opportunities for those in Lansing. I want to say again, that's a zero-mill bond. That means that this is 25 years. That includes all residences, but also all businesses in Lansing. There'll be no increase in their tax base because of this millage, and this is, May the 3rd is when it's scheduled for this vote. And encourage everybody, we need everyone to get out and vote. This is another true game increase changer for the city of Lansing, in particular, the Lansing schools.
That's right. So the day before Star Wars Day, May the 4th, you've waited too long, you missed it. So May the 3rd, make sure. All right. And with that, any questions, or we can just wrap up? I want to be respectful of time.
Do we have any questions, comments? Mayor, sure, sure.
Well, thank you both very much. I wanted to remind the representative, which I'm sure she already knows, we'll be proposing our budget on May 28th, and then council will be taking a final vote in May 30th. So with all of your tremendous expertise, I hope you will encourage Representative Albert and leadership that whatever we're getting on revenue sharing, it would be great to have it in our budget beforehand. I know that's asking a lot, I've been there. But I do want to thank you. I want to thank you for the $1 million you got to us for our policing and security cameras. I want to thank you for the $2 million for the Performing Arts Center. I want to thank you for the incredible work you did on the incentives for the GM deal. We're bringing over seven, well, we're bringing over $7 billion to Michigan, but we're bringing 2.7 here to Lansing, and that wouldn't have happened without your work. So thank you very much on behalf of myself and the citizens of Lansing.
Councilman Spatafor.
A few things, if I may, Mr. President. Thank you for everything you do. Every time I pick up the phone to call you, you answer, and you find a solution to the problem that a constituent's brought to us, or you fight for those funding things. You and I just had a conversation about things that might help the regional cultural institutions in our area. And so just thank you for all your work. And Kelly, as well, I want to thank you for, again, stepping up to support our school district. I'm, as you all know, I'm Chair of your Finance Committee for this bond project, and very excited about the work that it's going to bring to do even more for the children of the city of Lansing. So I did want to ask, Mr. President, if you'll indulge, since we're here and talking about it, I wonder if the clerk might talk about the timelines for applications for ballots and absentee ballots and things like that? Is that all right?
I think he is prepared, yes.
Sure. I'll take my comments, really, on behalf of Clerk Chris Swope, that we will, every voter has the option to select their voting method that works best for them. So whether voting at home, voting on Election Day on May 3rd, or at your precinct, or voting early. Already, we've emailed this week out to every voter that we had to email for to sign up to vote at home. Friday, we will be mailing out to every voter who hasn't signed up via email, an application. We're still in a pandemic. We really encourage people to take a look at voting at home, is that convenient for them? So we are mailing that out right now. So this is a great time. You can check your email. We probably already emailed that you can send that back, because we have to have a request in order to send out a ballot for every election. We're going to have to do it again for the August. So if you have questions about it, you can go to our website, lansingvotes.com, or call our office at 483-4131. When you, those applications can be dropped into one of our 15 drop boxes throughout the city, so you don't necessarily have to mail it back to vote at home, and then we'll mail out the ballots. If you'd like to vote early, a lot of people enjoy that option, that starts March 24th. So the election begins now. You have all those options available for you. But your last chance is on May 3rd, and then you can celebrate Star Wars Day the next day. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Is that it? Okay. So I will wrap up with the questions, and maybe comments and questions. First of all, I can say some things that maybe you can't. When she, you know, when Representative Anthony talked about, you know, revising the process for setting speed limits, what she didn't say is that we have an incredibly flawed state statute with regards to speed limits along the state's corridors, roadways. And I knew this dating back to 2013, because my community asked essentially for a study to be done with regards to South MLK. There were stretches that were 35 miles per hour, there were stretches that were 40 miles per hour. And the reality is, there were severe fluctuations at that time, anywhere from 30 to 50. We know that 50 was far too high for that corridor, and we also know that fluctuations can kill, just like speed can kill. In any event, unfortunately, because of the flawed state statute, what happened was Michigan State Police actually studied traffic volumes, as well as traffic speeds, and determined that 85% of the drivers were driving at 45 miles per hour or faster. And so what they did, as opposed to reducing the traffic speed, they actually increased the speed on M99, also known as South MLK, to 45 miles per hour. I understand the spirit of that policy, it's called the 85th percentile policy. I understand the spirit in that they are concerned about fluctuations, and they want to make sure that there's consistency. That makes a lot of sense for freeways. However, when you take a corridor that is uniquely positioned along a commercial, you know, kind of district and a residential district, we simply cannot have a state statute that has this kind of one-size-fits-all approach, because these are not apples-to-apples. What ended up happening, candidly, and I appreciate Chief Sosa being our data analyst, post-2013, the fluctuations didn't change. What happened was the speeds changed. So instead of the fluctuation being from 30 to 50, now they're 40 to 60, or 40 to 65, or maybe even upwards of 80. And so we have absolutely seen a worsening of the situation. We, again, mine the data, it is clear that something needs to be done. So we certainly appreciate you taking that on. Anything we can do, whether that be letters, whether that be resolutions of support, please let us know, because I'm done seeing folks that I love and care about in this community being hit and engaged in motor vehicle or accidents along South MLK. It's a problem. The other piece is, you know, you and I have worked on the idea of traffic enforcement cameras. And my understanding, I believe it was House Bill 5284, that you actually introduced maybe this past August. And at the time, I think it was, I referred to the, was it the House Judiciary Committee?
Transportation, I believe.
Was it? Okay. In any event, the reason I had brought that to your attention is a few reasons. Number one, we are, and again, Chief Sosa is sitting in the back of the room, we are struggling mightily, not just locally, but across the state and across the country, to recruit and retain officers, we know that. There's also a renewed call for, you know, objectivity when we talk about traffic enforcement. And a number of states do actually allow for traffic enforcement cameras. The technology has advanced greatly in the, you know, past few years, and we know that this is a way, another tool essentially, to put in the toolbox of our police department. Can you tell us anything about where we're at? Because at this time, my understanding is that state statute actually prohibits locals from purchasing and using traffic enforcement cameras.
Thank you for bringing that back up. So we did introduce that, I believe, in either late October or early November of last year. It is still waiting for a hearing in the Transportation Committee. So we have advocated, we are in constant communication with the Chair, but we hope to get a hearing this year. If not, we'll reintroduce it if I continue to serve in some capacity in the Capitol. So, but right now, we're still waiting on a hearing.
Thank you. And again, if there's anything we can do to support, let us know. I think the only other comments, I took a look at your funding priorities, and of course, you know, incredibly important in terms of redevelopment in the downtown area, but I always, always, always encourage you all to consider, you know, those priorities outside of the downtown area. So when we talk about business, as an example, districts and corridors outside of the downtown area, what is it that we can do? Even when it comes to incentives. And I would encourage you to, you know, meet with folks from LEAP and the EDC, and to talk about why, because it really is, wire cupboard is a little bit more bare when you talk about, you know, reversing urban decay outside of downtown areas across the state of Michigan. And what are other states doing that? I mean, they're doing a lot better of a job than we are, many are. So I would certainly encourage you to do that. And then I'm just going to very quickly say, you know, the liquor control code and predatory lending will always be a concern of mine. I believe the way that the state statutes are written right now absolutely allow for harming of people in my community. And I'm never going to stop beating that drum. I know that you've worked on it, I know that you continue to work on it, and I just ask you to never lose sight of that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Can I say one other quick thing, since we still have the Chief of Police here? So I'm still doing research to see if I can actually say this and it be true. But a, maybe a week or so ago, again, in honor of Black History Month, you all know about the Crown Act. Many of you helped to pass the Crown Act here in the city of Lansing under the leadership of Councilmember Spitzley, so we thank you for that leadership. Also, Ingham County has passed a similar resolution, as well as East Lansing, Genesee County, others, and we're fighting at the state level. But I believe, after communication with the Chief of Police, that the Lansing Police Department may be one of the first police departments to enact the Crown Act here in the city of Lansing, to ensure that men and women who apply for jobs or seek promotion within the police department will not be discriminated based on their natural hair. So I wanted to applaud the Chief, as well as the city of Lansing, for your leadership to continue to promote the Crown Act and promote inclusion, not just in words, but in deeds. So thank you all for doing that. And thank you for the time. Appreciate you.
Absolutely. We appreciate both of you. Thank you. I'm going to take just a second. Yeah, absolutely. We appreciate you. I'm going to take just a second, because I know that these folks are probably going to leave about 8:00 p.m., because they do not yet have their driver's license, licenses, and I believe their parents are going to be outside of City Hall, over on Michigan Avenue, picking them up. But I wanted to recognize tonight, we have a very special group of individuals with us. We have the Waverly Student Council, including the President. We have the Vice President. We have the Student Council Teacher Advisor, which is my social studies counterpart, Mr. Kevin Kaysel, the best history teacher I think I've ever taught with in my 12-year career, he's fantastic. And I just wanted to really quickly recognize these group, these folks. They do so much to civically engage at such a young age. They have one heck of a head start. I don't think I probably got civically engaged in this way until maybe post-college. And so I really, really appreciate you. I know my colleagues on council appreciate all you are doing to make sure that your school community is one that is safe, and that is sound for academic progress for students, but also that social, emotional progress. And so if you don't mind, I'd love to have you guys stand up, and we'd love to recognize you all tonight.
With their parents.
And if you're, yes, absolutely. If your parents are actually with you, we'd love for them to stand up as well. All right. And the only thing I would say is, keep going, all right? Keep going. We appreciate you guys. Thanks so much. Councilman Spatafor.
I would just like to welcome them personally. I got my first elected office, was the Waverly Middle School Student Council myself, so thank you for being here, and thank you for your service.
See what you have to look forward to? Exciting.
Yeah, this is your warning. Don't do this.
All right, folks. That brings us to presentation number, I'm sorry, this is actually agenda item number four. So presentation for Brownfield Plan Number 80, Pleasant Grove and Homes Mixed-Use Development Project. I'm actually going to turn the floor over to Councilman Garza for an introduction of our speakers tonight.
Great. Thank you, Council President. So I believe we have Chris Dorikowski and Eric Heltzer, and obviously Joel Ferguson, if you'd like to, this is your, this is your project, so please feel free to come to the well, you guys. And I'm sorry, Christopher Klein as well.
Oh, yeah.
Chris, there's another chair over there, too.
Yeah, so you, I mean, you feel free to utilize both tables. Looks like we have four in one, but you certainly can scooch one over if you want. Welcome, gentlemen. How's it going? Fantastic. I do believe we have materials in our red supporting documents folder. But again, this is something that we've talked quite a bit about. The public hearing is later tonight, and so we wanted to make sure to bring this group in and allow for a presentation prior to tonight's public hearing. So with that being said, I will turn the floor over to, I would assume, Chris Klein to begin.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you, Council President Hussein, Council members. So just wanted to give a quick rundown of the project, and really how we got to the redevelopment of the Pleasant Grove and Homes School building at 2130 West Homes. So out of the year-long community engagement process that led ultimately to the Southwest Action Plan in 2016, this school property was identified as one of the key properties along that intersection, along all of Southwest Lansing for development. And this property, in its current vacant, blighted state, was also one of the reasons that intersection was the primary focus of the action plan, and then ultimately the Invest Health Initiative and subsequent efforts by the community. So while stakeholders and partners, including residents, the Southwest Action Group, city of Lansing, LEAP, Health Department, Land Bank, and so many others that I know I'm forgetting, and Ferguson Development, of course, have made great strides in that area, along that intersection. And this includes facade improvements. intersection. And this includes facade improvements to several surrounding businesses and the strip commercial center right there on the intersection, the establishment of Beacon Park, which had a continuous play soccer field installed, funds raised from the community members and partners throughout, business partners throughout the community. It also include a playground, a cubo and playground, and a walking trail and a natural area as well with plants and other wildlife. And then also the Southwest Lansing Town Square that came with an art piece awarded by the City of Lansing. It's been some of the key developments and efforts in that area over the last few years, but still this building continued to languish, being one of the key focuses, continuing to put effort into seeing how to potentially redevelop that. And so now that we've come to this, the proposed project includes many of the community-based and community-driven focuses within the action plan and many of the community conversations that we've had throughout the last several years. These include housing, financial empowerment resources, healthcare resources, educational services, and employment opportunities. So the current condition of the building, it has potentially harmful historical building materials on the site. It's a very difficult project to pencil, and therefore, the developer is seeking a brownfield plan to assist with these extraordinary costs of the project and bring this community asset to fruition. This plan was approved unanimously by the LBRA Board, and we appreciate council's ongoing support and consideration. Now I'd like to turn it over to the developers, Ferguson Development.
Do you want to start off?
I can start off. Good evening. My name's Eric Heltzer with Advanced Redevelopment Solution, working with Ferguson Development on this project. The plan before you hear, just to give you an overview of the project itself and the plan, and then I'm going to let Christopher speak and Mr. Ferguson speak toward the efforts and why we're doing this community-based project. And I think it's important for them to highlight what these aspects are going to be in one of the buildings. The project is, in fact, Christopher, if you could put up the site plan, that might be a good one to start with, and pop that up on the chair. I think the public will get a screenshot of that when, yep, that'd be great. And if not, we'll move it over to the side. See if that works. May have to have you stand there. Okay, there she's got it. All right, great.
Done my job.
It's a four-acre site, this L-shaped site. The first building, Building One, is on the corner. If you could point to that, Christopher, on the corner there. Yep, thank you. That building is about a 28,000-square-foot building. It's a two-story building that will have a medical aspect to it. It will have a legal aspect. It'll have health services, financial, educational, and technology. Thank you. And Christopher will go through that in a little bit more detail specifically. But that particular building there in the corner is exactly in the spot of where the current school building is. The other building that is sitting in the back corner there, right now where it's proposed, that is a 20,000-square-foot building, two-story, that will have about 30 units of housing. The housing is right now targeted for veterans' housing, and we're working diligently on that. Immediately after the brownfield approach, we're going to be focused on the housing aspect. Right now, all of our energy has been on that corner anchor building due to the number of tenants and the programming that Christopher will speak to. The project takes, from a brownfield perspective, because of, like Chris Klein has mentioned, the vast amount of asbestos, demolition, and infrastructure improvements that have to occur on this site. Because of our reduced rents in this area of town, because of the size of the expenses that we have to have, that is why we're seeking the brownfield plan. We're purchasing this property from the Land Bank, and it's an important thing for us to know. We've been working very closely with the Land Bank on the property that they've had for sale for several years. One of the things that's important for you to know about this particular brownfield plan is the first five years of tax capture due to legislation has to be captured. 50% of all available taxes that are generated go to the Land Bank, and that's a statutory requirement. So what that means to us as a development team is that we have a reduced amount of capture available to us in the first five years. And those are the first, most important years in a brownfield plan. So we incur all of this cost to deal with these brownfield conditions, basically to green the site, to allow us to ready the property for redevelopment. But we're working out of the gate with a lot less tax revenue that we're generating through our investment in paying our taxes and then that being captured. So there's just less that's available to us. So in our efforts and working with Lansing Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, as well as Lansing Economic Area Partnership, we're working on a piece to help offset some of the insurmountable costs that we have in this plan, and that's in a form of a forgivable loan in the event there is insufficient revenue to basically pay for all of the contemplated expenses. So that would be reimbursed through here. That would be a loan that we would obtain through the Brownfield Authority and then reimburse it with the taxes. So that's very helpful for meeting the gap. Our gap right now, because of the structure, is about $1.5 million. And that's a forecasted gap based on the expenditures that we have to incur. Now, we're hopeful that when we go on the street for competitive bidding, that we're going to get better numbers. But unfortunately, and you've heard it from developers, I'm sure, in the last two years, there's been a 30% increase in construction costs to development projects like this. 12% just in the last six months alone. And that's what we're finding on average across all of our projects. So it is, it's a difficult road in development world, and these incentives have become even more important, especially in a project like this. So we got a couple of renderings we can throw up here to show you. This is the Building One that Christopher's going to be putting up. This is the corner building that we call the commercial building. This is the, yep, thank you. And this is looking, which direction are we looking at here, Christopher? This is the, from the corner, right?
We're looking north, so east is to the right.
There you go.
Top.
So pretty handsome building. It's a nice-looking property. It's really going to make a difference here on this corner. And the next board is the housing. And that's the one that sits in the back. Yep, and that's again. Thank you.
I want to give us some credit for this because Adam and the City Council, the one strength that we showed in this, we were great listeners. Because in talking with you and other council members, what you said, you told us what you wanted and what you didn't want. Now, the beauty is, you talked about, and I, you know, I don't know, you know, we're both, I'm a school teacher, you know, Chris was, and you are. My goodness, you'd be some competition in redevelopment. Because you told us the main thing that you wanted and really signaled that in order to make people excited to move into an area or neighborhood, that you have to start with something that they want. And so what Chris displayed and what you see right here is really the foundation for people to want to move into the area and to the neighborhood and the community that we're going to build and put something in. And that, starting there, there's a place where it says "Go" and having this. And yes, we will end up having to build more housing because people are going to want to live over there. They're going to want to live someplace where it starts off with a strong foundation, where it says, "Welcome to everyone who wants to come over." And I want to just thank the City Council and the Mayor's Office, that they've been very cooperative as we've lined up the different foundation people, and also to end up making people want to move over in South Lansing because we have the foundation. We will also have the help of the Lansing Police Department will be active there. Everyone will feel so comfortable. And I just feel that I'm blessed that I'm working with Eric and Chris, who really worked very hard. And what everyone doesn't realize, or doesn't yet appreciate, the Land Bank. David, huh?
And Roxanne.
And Roxanne, will you please stand up so everyone actually knows who started?
I'll point at you.
Who's starting the snowball down the hill. And David and Roxanne, and I'll say this, that Adam, he jumped down the snowplow, we rolled down the hill, and he saw some potential here. But David and Roxanne, will you please, both of you, stand up so?
They just did.
Oh, they did?
They just did, yeah.
Okay, that shows you, it's pretty hard to talk and to look. And I'll tell you what, I don't feel bad about repeating their names. I don't feel bad about repeating and thanking the City Council. And I don't feel bad about being redundant, talking about the Mayor's Office and the City Council. LEAP, that we want to really make this a game changer for Lansing and really a model for what other cities should be doing. And Lansing is going to be taking a giant step forward, and we're so happy to be part of that. And the leadership here in this here. And I just want to thank all of you. Say, this is really, for us, this is not a case to come here today and ask for something, but really to thank you all. You know, you're all working together so well, you know, which, and we're the benefit, we benefit from that. And so I can't say enough that from the Land Bank to the City Council and the leadership that you have is not a slogan, it's something that's extremely real, and we're all benefited from that. And I want to say this too, that when we did the Red Cedar, we passed a resolution that we would hire local people, and we'd be very comfortable with the unions also working. And so this is who we are and what we want to do. Because we can be part of Lansing's best years are ahead of them because of the leadership that it has right now. Thank you very much.
Besides just putting the things on the easel, I wanted to thank everybody as well. I also, I mean, we're a village. It's, Joel said I was a school teacher. It does take a village. There's no question about it. I appreciate all of the stakeholders in this part of the community that I live in. I started putting X's on my map here, showing of where I lived and where my mom lived, where Jennifer lived, where Joel lived, where my best friend lived. And it surrounds this spot. And I got very lucky. I went to Chicago and I taught there for a while, and I would brag about my neighborhood, and I would brag about Suxton, and I would brag about Dwight Rich and riding my bikes around and hanging out at Colonial Village and hanging out over at Terranova's where I had my first job. And I have to say that I'm humbled to be part of this project. And, you know, I was, I want this on the record that I was sort of offended that I had to follow Representative Anthony and Kelly Dean. However, you one-upped me with the junior high, Waverly Junior High Council. Very impressive. But that's how we make a difference. You know, we have conversations, we have easy conversations, we have difficult conversations. Joel brought up the Red Cedar. Adam, you and I, we started off, I'm going to guess we weren't going to give each other Christmas cards. But, you know, we figure out what's important, we try to figure out what's right, do the right thing for all the right reasons. And I can't speak for anybody else here, but like I said, it's, I feel very proud of this project. I can't tell you how I want it to be successful and the people that have reached out to me within the community with the opportunity to make things happen, the empowerment, the equity piece, the justice piece, all of these things that I'm sure a lot of us have taken for granted growing up, and some of us have never had the opportunity to experience those things. And I would argue that it's $1 spent and it's $8 invested. And I just wanted to say that.
Thank you so much. Do we have questions or comments from council members? I think, I think I'm going to make a quick comment. What I don't want to get lost is that we had, I would say through community forums, surveys, et cetera, in 2016 into 2017 and 2018, candidly, we had, dare I say, maybe thousands of people that participated in Southwest Lansing in terms of the visioning, you know. And it wasn't, it wasn't just about attracting people to Southwest Lansing, but it was really retaining the people that were there or that are there and really helping people to ascend in a, maybe in a way that, as an example, developments don't always help to do. And I remember very, very clearly the meeting that we had along with Mayor Shore in his office. I believe Bishop Maxwell was there as well. And because there had been so much community input up to that point, I remember speaking to you all about what I wanted to see at the corner of Pleasant Grove and Homes, but it really wasn't what I wanted to see. It was what the folks in Southwest Lansing wanted to see. And I've said this a number of times, but to your credit, because to this point, and I'm certainly hoping people follow suit, you're the only developers I've been able to work with over the past six years that have said, "Tell me what you want, and we're going to do our darndest to make it happen." And again, when you talk about the opportunity for, you know, reputable financial services, when you talk about healthcare, when you talk about educational opportunities, when you talk about adequate and appropriate housing, I mean, the list goes on. And I talked about this at the press conference, but again, I mean, we're checking so many critical boxes with this particular development. With regard to the brownfield plan, these developments are simply almost impossible to bring across the goal line. And so I certainly appreciate, Eric, you illustrating that so eloquently. And again, I think this is one of the reasons we don't see enough of these projects. And this also speaks to one of the reasons I, you know, obviously challenged Representative Anthony earlier tonight to take a look at the state's, you know, toolbox and taking ways, or looks at ways we can kind of make that a bit more robust. Because again, we're going to continue to support people where they're at in neighborhoods like mine. We need to see more of this investment. So I really appreciate you guys. With that being said, I don't, okay, Councilwoman Spitzley and then Mayor Shore.
Just really quick. I walked past there too. That's my, that's my path from my house to my mom's house. And so I'm, I'm, I'm over the moon about this proposed redevelopment. But I'm also very excited about the rippling effect. I was in 1910 Meat Market right after the announcement, and he was just bustling, you know, because he sees the potential for his business to expand as well. And that's really what you want from a development like that. You want it to be a ripple effect where not only your development is successful, but the surrounding businesses are successful. And he's a great grocer, a great butcher, you know, fresh food, and he is looking forward to expanding his services to meet the needs of the folks that are going to be in the office complex portion that are living in the apartments. And that's what really drives the economic development on that side of town that I've been in forever, you know, live there. And so I'm very excited. I appreciate the complexities of the brownfield. I had tough questions during economic development and planning, but, you know, that's my job. But I do appreciate the need for the brownfield, and I'm just glad you guys have done it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to repeat what's already been said. One of the things that I have told Councilman Hussein and several others is that on the campaign trail, I heard a lot about South Lansing not getting many of the resources they felt others were getting. Councilman Hussein has raised that. One thing that I did commit, and you'll hear this in my State of the City when we release it, is that we're going to open the toolbox for South Lansing. Certainly, we have a lot of great projects in the downtown, in the stadium district, and I am very excited for all of those. But it is sometimes harder to develop in South Lansing, and we're going to open the toolbox. And this is where I want to thank Chris Klein, because I gave him that direction several weeks ago, several months ago, and we're just publicizing it now. But when I told him, "Let's open the toolbox," he brought me some very unique options in working with Eric Heltzer, in working with Christopher Strakowski and Joel Ferguson. So this really is a unique project where we said, let's, they said, Joel said to me, and Christopher said to me, you know, "We're from here. This is going to be, along with Red Cedar, this is going to be our legacy. This is where Malcolm X went to school, it's going to be our legacy." So we kind of set that in motion. I know you were very supportive, and I committed to you and to Patricia and Carol, and really to everyone here, that we're going to open the toolbox in South Lansing. And Joel and Christopher and Eric were the first ones to take advantage of it, and I'm proud to do it. And we're excited to bring this to you. And we're excited to bring this to you, we're excited to bring this to the public, and I think that this is going to be a great project, I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
I agree. Councilman Brown?
Thank you, President Hussein. I concur with everybody, but I'm just very excited about, it's not just another building, but it's a place of empowerment. The services and the type of organizations that you're looking at bringing in is what just gets me elated to know that there's going to be access, there's going to be support, there's going to be empowerment, and truly, it's going to be a place for the community to not only get hope, but to be inspired, to say, "What can we do next? What is our potential?" And living our purpose in our community, we have the support, we have the quality, we have the housing, we have our people, you know, whether we're walking the street door by door, stopping in at a business, or needing some help with financial literacy, or whatever it is, that it's available and it's right there. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Good night. I just want to say, and Councilperson Spitzley, one of the things that I've had conversations with stakeholders is this cannot be a one-off. This has to be a chain, this has to be a beginning of something else. Just down the road on Homes is Logan Square. I was having a discussion with our architect on this particular project, and I said, "Hey, can you just take a look at this? Just bird's eye view this, what could you change?" You know, and when you talk to the people that have the skill sets such as Eric, and Chris, and Joel, you know, they'll jump on it, because it's a challenge, you know, and that's the thing, this is a challenge. I don't back away from a challenge. I know this guy doesn't, I know Eric doesn't, and I know LEAP doesn't. And to challenge people to make their communities better for the community itself, again, is it hard? Absolutely. Is it easier in some spots, like at the Red Cedar, being next to a large, you know, Big Ten university, you know, maybe in the downtown area, where you're next to the Capitol Building? But this is where the rubber meets the road, and the community, and it makes a difference in the quality of everyone's lives on a daily basis, you know, not in, you know, the long term.
Well said. Vice President Wood.
I don't want to belabor the point, but I did want to make a couple of comments here. Many of you that know me know that I talk about neighborhoods as being the heart of Lansing, and without the sustainability and the growth in a neighborhood, Lansing will cease to exist. You've also heard me repeatedly say that our corridors are the front doors to those neighborhoods. And without improvement on those corridors, people will not come in to the neighborhoods. You look at it as if it's the front porch, if it's scattered with trash and dilapidated porch, and, you know, the junk car out in front, you don't know that inside that house is $100,000 worth of furnishing and things like that, because you haven't gotten past the front porch. The fact that when a developer, as Councilmember Hussein and the mayor has indicated, you know, were challenged to look at that and to make a difference, were willing to take that up. We had similar discussions with another developer, and even had an ad hoc committee for South Lansing that brought that particular developer in and talked about, we did roof counts and looked at a number of those things to talk about. Here is the opportunity to have capital, there's investment here, there's people that are willing to live in our community and need those resources that you have out there, and didn't take us up on it. You know, as we move forward with this, I see this as a model project that we can use out there again, and Joel and Christopher can work with other developers to show them that this is feasible, this is something that can be done, and will make a critical difference for our community. So I just want to thank you for taking the challenge, for running with it and understanding, again, because we know your love of our community, and we appreciate that, and the fact that you are willing to put your money where your mouth is, and that you're willing to move forward. We thank you.
Mr. Ferguson?
Oh, I want to say that when it comes to sports, especially when it comes to development, and working with this city council, it's not just a slogan, "You win with good people." And I just want to say this very much, that the input, the suggestions that we received from the council members and from the mayor, and then besides what they were saying, they acted out. And it really makes this what I'm so proud of, because my daughter Jennifer is here right now, and we used to live in Colonial Jive, and this is where, when she was a little girl, where we lived. And this was a neighborhood and an area that I'm very familiar with, and I'm saying that with the suggestions that were given us in how to start this, it made total sense, and I just want to thank Chris and Eric, because what we do is we got the foundation, really, to why people will want to end up moving here, and will be able to show a roadmap for the rest of the city, that there's no neighborhoods that can't be really worked with and be better with people working together. And I'm talking about, and the best way that any developer should act in any city they go into is to actually find out what the community wants. And we've been blessed, because we've lived into the area, so we got a feeling for what you want. But I'll tell you what, and it's great to have the city leaders actually know what they want, and what the citizens need. So all I can say to you is this, that you've given us something that we can point to with pride, when we make this really something special for Lansing and for the state of Michigan. And it's because of the body I'm looking at here, that you do really, you win with good people. And the voters and the community are very lucky that we have all of you. And so I want to just say, thank you very much for being very open to the suggestions and things we're working with, and our team, Eric and Christopher. And I feel that we're going to make, do something special, because we got a lot of pride too, just like all of you do. So I just want to thank you, Mayor, and thank you all of you for working with us. And I'll tell you what, Lansing's best years are ahead, based upon what I'm looking at here in this room today. Thank you again very much.
Thank you so much. We certainly appreciate you guys being here. And of course, this is up for a public hearing tonight, so if you guys want to stick around and listen, that'd be fantastic. All right? Thanks so much. Ladies and gentlemen, we have one last presentation. So presentation number five, again, I'm going to turn the floor over to Councilman Garza, so that he can introduce the item, as well as our speakers, who I do, yep, absolutely, they are on hand. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council President. So we have a presentation by Barb Kimmel from the Development and Planning Department, as well as Griffin LLC. So please come on down to the wall.
All right, so I would assume Barb, you're going to start?
I'm going to start.
Okay, Barb, you have the floor.
Yep, good evening. We're here to talk about the proposed sale of 1020 West Hillsdale.
Can you do me a favor? One, make sure the green light's on. Two, pull it just a little bit closer to you. Thanks so much.
So tonight, we're here to talk about the proposed sale of 1020 West Hillsdale to the Griffin Group. The property is currently owned by the city and has been since 1999. It was acquired from Union Missionary Baptist Church when they moved across the street to their current location. And it was acquired as part of the seven-block plan. And it was originally, the church was originally planned to be a community center, but the church was demolished in 2007, and the property has sat vacant since that time. And it was part of the city's real property inventory. The mayor set up the Build Lansing Initiative, and this property is a part of that initiative. LEAP did an RFP in 2021, and the response from Griffin Group was the only response received, and so here we are.
Before I get into exactly what we're doing here tonight, I want to give you a little background on me, who I am, and what it is that I do. I was born, raised in Lansing, went to Michigan State University, ended up moving out to Duett, where I was for over 20 years, raising my family. One left to go, he's out of the house after this year. And my wife and I ended up moving out to Bath, and that's where we currently reside. So I've been in the area for my entire life. So in regards to business, I've been a developer for 25 years. The company, along with its partners, has 30-plus projects around the state of Michigan, ranging from Kalamazoo up to the Upper Peninsula. Locally, we have developments in Duett, St. John's, East Lansing, Holt, Eaton Rapids. So I've done quite a bit of development around the city of Lansing, and now I'm looking forward to doing some within the city of Lansing. So when it came to finding a site for my new development, I came across 1020 West Hillsdale Place. And as mentioned by Barb, the city issued a RFP, we responded, we'd like to put 40 units of affordable and permanent supportive housing on there. Ultimately, we were selected, so over the last couple of months, we have been working through the development process, and we're currently preparing an application to go to Michigan State Housing Development Authority, MISHDA, on April 1st for funding of said affordable and permanent supportive housing development. Should we be fortunate in getting the tax credits for that, we hope to close and start construction either at the end of this year, or at the beginning of next year. But that's getting a little ahead of myself, I guess we need to get site control before then. So that's why we're here tonight, to start that process with the city and have a public hearing, and hopefully get the city's support to sell the property, just as is contemplated in the RFP that the city issued. So before I wrap up, I'm here with Mickey Droste, who's going to get into the specifics of the, what it is that we are looking at putting on the site.
Good evening. You should have in your packet a short, five-page proposal that talks a little bit about what the site plan will look like for the 40 apartments, the proposed property, or the proposed project at the site. We'll have one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. They will be rented to persons at or below 60% of area median income. So in Lansing, area median incomes for a single person are somewhere in the neighborhood of $33,000. A family of four is about $47,000. So half of the units will be rented to persons at those incomes, the other half will provide housing for persons who need supportive housing. And we have a partnership in place with Advent House Ministries and the local community mental health to provide services. We've also recently had a conversation with the school district, who is interested in referring back and forth families for the site, because they know that they have students in the immediate district that are in need of such housing. So the site plan that shows the four buildings plus the community center at the site is in your packet. There are some very simple floor plans that are in, that give you kind of the layout of the one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. Since we've actually provided these for you, we've gone back to the drawing board a little bit, increased the size some, because the person doing the market study on the site determined that we needed to increase the size of the units a little bit, which we are working on at this point. And then the last page has the layout of kind of which apartments, one and two and three bedrooms, will have what rents, because I know you are usually interested in what rents are going to be available for the residents.
Is that it? All right, Finn, I mean, it was a lot of information.
It was all I can do in one breath.
All right, do you have any questions or comments from council members? Vice President Wood.
I have a couple of comments for, or questions for legal. Jim? On the purchase agreement, the way I read it is if they do not receive the tax credits from MISHDA, then this is null and void. Is that correct?
Well, I haven't looked at that document, but there's a couple of questions even before that. Is the price more than, or less than $50,000?
200.
It's 200, all right. So you're going to need public hearings, documents on file for 30 days, and then six votes by the city council.
Okay.
I'll look at that other issue.
Okay. If you could look at that, because tonight is the public hearing for it, and I believe it did sit for 30 days, so I think we are good there, so I'm just...
Yes, they, what you said was correct, that if they don't receive the tax credit, the purchase agreement is no longer valid.
Okay. Because I would not want us to sell the property and then not have what the intent was going to be used for it, and then have it sold for something else.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, we certainly appreciate you guys being here tonight, thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, next we are the comments by council members.
Do we have any comments from council members? Councilwoman Spitzley?
Thank you, Mr. President. This last Friday, I was honored to be, to join in celebrating Alfreda Schmidt. It was the anniversary of the Michigan Veterans Trust Fund. On February 26, 1946, Governor Harry Kelly signed Public Act 9 into law, creating the Michigan Veterans Trust Fund. And the purpose of that is to provide an emergency funding for veterans, and it's kind of an emergency assistance fund. Not surprising, Alfreda Schmidt was intimately involved in this, as she's intimately involved in everything, but surprisingly, they also honored her with their recognition that she's been a part of this, her and her husband, since almost conception of the fund. And so I wanted to mention that and give my own particular honor to Alfreda Schmidt. There were members of the mayor's Veterans Task Force Committee there on hand to also recognize her. So I wanted to let everybody know, and, you know, let you guys know what's going on with Alfreda lately. She's still doing her thing.
Thank you so much. Oh, sorry. Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank everybody for coming out here, even though I see a lot of it's for business, but there's a few citizens coming out. I just want to renew our push for having a virtual option for those at home, or that want to watch and want to also participate, can. And I also want to possibly excuse myself later, I have my two kids here, my wife's traveling back from New York, and I did it all this whole weekend, and this is the last day, but if I have to leave, just please excuse me, thank you.
All right, thank you. Very quickly, I want to, in terms of my time for comments, I want to say how impressed I am with Councilmember Daniels. We appointed Councilmember Daniels at the beginning of February, and he has already had a constituent coffee. And I can remember back in 2015, when I was elected, I had a couple of months as councilman elect, and then when I actually took the position in 2016, it took me probably about four or five months to kind of work up the nerve to actually get out there, meet people where they're at, and discuss the issues. And for you to jump right in like that, incredibly impressive. And to transition from that, a shameless plug, I'm having my own constituent contact meeting. This, it's actually going to be March 12th, 10:00 to 12:00 noon, at the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center, that's located at 5825 Wise Road. We have not met in person in quite some time, but it is, it's time, it's time to come back together and discuss... It's time to come back together and discuss the issues, prioritize the issues, and start our work again in terms of moving our community forward. Of course, we've done as much as we possibly can, you know, through remote participation and the like, but again, I think it's time to come back together and roll up our sleeves. To that end, the Southwest Action Group is also hosting their first in-person meeting in quite some time. If you don't know anything about Southwest Action Group, it is a, just an incredibly invested group of business owners, neighborhood leaders, respective citizens, really throughout South Lansing. I wouldn't even say it's just Southwest Lansing. A number of folks all, you know, from all across South Lansing come and participate. But again, they are back to in-person. They will be meeting tomorrow, March 1st, at 6:00 PM. The meeting takes place at the South Side Community Coalition, and that's located at 2101 West Homes. And I encourage folks to come out. There's a number of things that SWAG is working on, and one, it's just, you know, good to be updated on those types of things. But the other piece is SWAG, of course, is always looking for other individuals to, you know, to join. Its membership, as an example, to provide ideas and support, so we certainly encourage you to come out. And then lastly, I wanted to share, I had an awesome opportunity this past Friday to present to the South Lansing Kiwanis Club. And right at the end of the meeting, they told me about a pretty cool initiative that's going out right now, where they are partnering with a group to help provide beds for kids in Lansing that are in need. So I wanted to read this to you just very quickly. It says that Lansing-area Kiwanis Clubs are working with Sleep in Heavenly Peace to build 20 to 40 beds for our kids, our community's kids, who don't have one and currently sleep on floors, mattresses, sofas, chairs, and blankets. There's a build date. That build date is May 21st, beginning at 9:00 AM. Sleep in Heavenly Peace was set up. They actually have the tools. They have canopies in case there's inclement weather. They have personal protective equipment, everything you could possibly need, they're going to have. And they're also going to be involved in the teardown. They wanted folks to know that volunteers need no experience to help on that build day. They will not only construct, I'm sorry, instruct on how to construct, but they also have local and national sponsors like Lowe's and Meyer to help with supplies, extra support, and even snacks, which is fantastic. They vet applicants for beds. They assemble along with their volunteers, the beds, which include a frame, a mattress, a pillow, sheet, and comforter. Each one of these sets cost them about $250 to put together. My understanding right now is they have funding for about 15. So again, they're trying to get all the way up to 40. So of course, donations and that thing, or that type of thing are welcomed. If you are interested in either participating in the build day, volunteering, or providing funds, because again, we're at 15, we want to get to 40 if possible, please contact Again, that's pk55@juno.com. You can also go to South, I believe it's southlansinkiwanis.org. And if you go actually to their homepage, that webpage, it's right there on the homepage in terms of all of the links with regards to volunteering and donating and the like. So I highly encourage folks to get involved. That being said, Mayor Shore.
Actually, we have the community event announcements.
Oh, sorry about that.
If anyone here for community events. And then next, and this is a last call on speaker registration for the public comment on legislative matters. You have one more minute to complete the blue sheet. Hand it to Jessica for any items seven through 18, which includes the four public hearings, the consent agenda, resolution for action, and ordinance for introduction. And now to the mayor's comments.
All right. I jumped the gun. I apologize. Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be quick. First, I want to offer another gone congratulations to our new police officers and to our new social worker. We certainly will have more coming as we fill, but I'm glad those have come before council. I want to congratulate McLaren, Greater Lansing, as well as Michigan State University. The hospital had their ribbon cutting today and opens to take patients on March 6th. All patients will be transferred. They're going to be ambulances moving people. They've got the whole thing ready. This is a $600 million investment in the city of Lansing, so I want to thank McLaren and MSU. And at the ribbon cutting this morning, I did actually say, "Go Green," which...
Those, thank you.
The Councilman Spatafor has responded, "Go White." Just for those who know me, you know that I'm a Wolverine, but when MSU helps to invest $600 million in our community, I'm going to say, "Go Green" every time. I want to let folks know that the Board of Water and Light is going to be doing another event for residents to help pay bills. Over a dozen local community partners will host two pandemic resource fairs to connect BWL residential customers and Greater Lansing residents who are behind on bills to information on community resources and financial assistance available to assist per available funding and eligibility. The event is free and open to the public. No pre-registration is necessary. It'll be on Wednesday, March 9th, from 1:00 to 5:00 PM at the Guyer Community Center, which is on the north side of Lansing, and Tuesday, March 15th, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM at the Letts Community Center, which is on the west side of Lansing. As you may or may not know, the last time they did this, they were expecting about 200 people, and they ended out having about 1,000 people. So the board is stepping up to help our residents. I also want to remind folks that this Saturday is the Mobile Food Pantry at the Tabernacle of David at 9:00 AM. Thank you, Councilman Spatafor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
So with Council President's approval, we're moving to the appointment of Amanda Bernays as the at-large member of the Arts and Culture Commission.
Yeah, and before we turn it over to Councilwoman Spitzley, I want to say how much I appreciate Amanda being here with us tonight. We appreciate your patience. We don't typically have that many presentations at the outset of our meeting, so thank you so much. But I wanted to check also to see, is Benjamin Brewer with us tonight?
Oh.
Benjamin is with us as well. Okay. So we're actually going to go through both of those. And again, we appreciate your patience and your understanding. Councilwoman Spitzley.
President, I wasn't here for Amanda.
Oh, I am so sorry. That is correct. Councilman Jackson.
No.
No. Who is it? Is it Councilman Daniels? All right.
All right. Next, so we're onto the appointment of Amanda Bernays, at-large member of the Arts and Culture Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2024. Her application is in the red folder. You know, one thing I will say, you know, other than waiting all night to do this, is, you know, she applied for this in 2018. So pre-COVID, she wanted to serve, and this was actually her second choice as well. So the fact that she's still willing to serve and spend her time, you know, helping the city of Lansing, I just think is great. So Amanda, if you could come down?
Oh, yeah.
I apologize. What? Oh, I move, yeah. So I move for the appointment of Amanda Bernays.
All right. There is a motion on the floor. Further discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Fantastic. Motion carries.
Oh, you go right here.
I'm so excited to have our election workers.
It's okay. Sorry.
... all of the area, doing community and working elections for us and now they're on the floor. Glad to be able to, to be here and be able to be here. Raise your hand. You say you support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Michigan, and basically discharge the duties of Office, Arts, and Culture Commission member, according to that's your ability. Thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Brewer, we'll get you down here in a minute. I just want to say that I was actually in the interview with Mr. Daniels, so I should have known that it was Mr. Daniels that was going to report out. That was a really, really good interview for my colleagues on council. Not only was she incredibly well-versed and really knew why she wanted to serve on this particular board, she kind of turned the tables and actually started asking us questions. And I think we were both sweating a little bit. I don't know that we had all the answers to the questions, but really inquisitive, and I think she's going to make a fantastic member with regards to this particular board. All right. And with that being said, that brings us to the appointment of Mr. Benjamin Brewer. And speaking to that, I wanted to make sure I had this right. Mr. Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So before us, we have the appointment of Benjamin Brewer as a resident member of the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority, Board of Directors for a term to expire June 30th of 2024. And like Councilman Daniels said, I'm impressed. You applied for this back in May of 2020. This is your first choice. You've been a Lansing resident now for approximately six years, and you want to get yourself involved in the community. So I appreciate that. Kudos to you, sir. Thanks for your willingness to serve. And I spoke to him during the committee, and I asked, you know, would you be willing, if you are appointed, to come out and meet with constituents at the ward meetings? And you said you would. So I appreciate that. You currently live on the Saginaw Street Corridor, and you just want to be a contributing resident and have that perspective on the board. So I congratulate you once again, sir. And with that, I would move the resolution.
All right. There is a motion on the floor. Further discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Come on down.
Oh, it's easier to be the second one. He's sitting outside. They have the mic, so they have everyone to hear you. You say you support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and will basically discharge the duties of Office of the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority, Board of Directors, member, according to that's your ability. Thank you very much for your service.
All right. That brings us to our show cause hearings. Tonight, we have one show cause hearing. This is in consideration of the orders to make safer demolish to the owners of property located at 2131 Pleasantview Avenue. I'm going to turn the floor over to Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. This particular property was red-tagged on December 3rd, 2019. This property, the assessed, the estimate of repairs is $126,168. At the time of the setting the public hearing and at the, and at the committee meeting, there were no permits that had been pulled, and there was no one who came forward at that time to, to advocate for this property. This has been an issue in this neighborhood for some time. People have, there's been three, three fires? Is that correct at this property?
Not at this one.
Okay. But if you look in your folder, you'll see a number of pictures of what the property looks like and the problems with that particular property. With that, that is ready for the public hearing.
And we do not have any speakers tonight for that show cause hearing.
So we request a referral to show cause hearing.
Public safety.
Okay. We're next to public comment legislative matters. Legislative matters consists of the following items on the agenda, items number seven through 18, which include the ordinance for introduction in regards to the requirement for owners' firearms to report the theft of those weapons in the following public hearing in consideration of brownfield plan number 80, Pleasant Grove and Holmes mixed-use development project at 2130 West Homes Road. Act 1, 2022, Real Estate Purchase Agreement, Griffin Group LLC for 1020 West Hillsdale Street, and ordinance to create the Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Board, and last, a special assessment of Glenburn Commons trash and grass abatement. And I want to make council aware that there's communications that you should receive regarding the hearing, which is part of the permit record. We have a communication for Dr. Linda Nubian, Nubani, in support of brownfield number 80, and then a appeal from Carlos Solis-Pateria on the Glenburn Assessment.
Thank you. So before we get to comment, we had obviously a number of comments, questions, et cetera, on item seven and eight. But with regard to our last two public hearings, number nine and 10, I'm going to turn the floor over, just for a brief introduction, on number nine, to Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. This is a public hearing today scheduled for, to amend the ordinances by adding chapter 256 to create a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board. This is basically the outcome of the mayor's racial justice equity alliance, and also it would codify an advisory board in our code of ordinances, which would establish a board to work with all diversity, equity, inclusion-related matters, including advising on issues implementing a racial justice and equity plan, reviewing relevant data and topics, and being a consistent overall measure. We had this come back to committee. We kind of talked about, you know, the need to implement other recommendations as well, and just for that group to be the one to review a lot of things. So today's a public hearing for that.
Thank you so much. And the, sorry, agenda item number 10, in consideration of special assessment for Glenburn Commons, this is trash and grass, or deals with trash and grass abatement. Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have here is a special assessment for Glenburn Commons. There, it's a unique situation where they are almost like a condo association in that group, that subdivision group. In the past, they did have, you know, a president and a vice president, and they were contributing to funds to maintain this open park area that's behind many of the homes. But that, that committee, that group folded for whatever reasons. And so in the past, the past few years, the grass has been overgrown. There's been some dumping there, and it's been a problem. And so we've been working with them and working with the city of Lansing to address that situation. And so this special assessment is the way that, there's an assessment on each home, and I think it's $47, $45 for each home roughly. Yeah, roughly. And that is to go towards the upkeep of that park area, which includes the grass cutting and, and, you know, cleaning up of dumped items. So with that...
We appreciate that. Clear, Jackson.
All right. Our first speaker is Joy Gleason, followed by Joel Ferguson. Okay. And I'm seeing Phil's going to pass.
Good evening, everyone. I am here to speak on two items, the brownfield plan for Pleasant Grove and Holmes, and the history buff in me has a small wound on my heart to see the building that's there torn down. Many of us are aware that Malcolm X went to that school for six years from 1930 to 1936, and it's something that part of me feels like we should be able to use to educate our young people and make them feel a connectedness to Lansing and American history. However, the reality is that that building, in the shape that it's in, is not doing much for our community. And the proposed development is going to do so much more for the future. And so the better thing is to move on with the development, but I would like to ask that it be kept in consideration that we have some sort of space set aside for a Malcolm X Education Center or something where not only the young people who are here in Lansing can learn about this important part of our connection to the greater American history, but people who come to the Lansing community would have a reason to come to that corner of our community and find out more about Malcolm X than just the fact that he was a world leader. And if I, it looks like I do have just a minute left that I can also talk about the real estate purchased by the Griffin Group. Again, I am in favor of seeing the development and having more housing that we need in our community for the people, but I would like them to consider, I saw the layout that they had there, some way for pedestrians to access the MLK side of that property. Within walking distance, there are a couple of stores that people can and most likely would go through, and rather than putting shrubs and trees and having them make deer paths, put in an actual pathway, or even if you face the front of the homes on that, that are to be built on that side towards MLK, to have it be open and lively and walkable as opposed to being buildings turned the other way in the back of the buildings to that street. It isn't a good look. It doesn't work well in a lot of places. I'd just like you to consider that. So thank you very much. So thank you very much.
All right. Next speaker is Joel Ferguson, followed by Hope Lavelle.
Thank you. I, I'm not interested in being overly redundant. I just want to say a thank you very much for, I had a wonderful opportunity to, to present our, our case. And I really thank you very much how received, how well it was received. And I did want to say this with the work of the mayor's office and the city council, that uh, I'm happy that we can be part of Lansing's best years to come. So thank you very much this evening.
Thank you. Next is Hope Lavelle, followed by Luna Brown.
Good evening. Um, it's so exciting to be able to say and hear about how the city council and private industry is coming together to really kind of put the final puzzle piece together to revitalize those four corners on Pleasant Grove and, Pleasant Grove and Holmes. I have lived in that, well, I lived in that area for over 10 years. I brought my kids home to that area. I go to church in that area, Tabernacle of David. And was excited to be a part of the action plan and invest health. And as we talked about, we really did bring the community together to talk about what did we want to see? What did we need in southwest Lansing to help revitalize this area that so many times, many of us felt that the city had forgotten? And so now fast forward, we see these wonderful plans and we see the medical office. And so I, interestingly enough, am on the Board of Directors for Ingham Community Health Centers. And I'm not sure really how familiar you are with ICHC, but we are one of the best kept secrets. We are one of the largest primary care providers in the Ingham County area, providing not only primary care, but mental health services, substance abuse services, uh, women in health, pediatrics, um, and the list goes on. And I am excited to say that I believe that this approval for the Brownfield will be great because if we all come together and we work together in agreement, as we said, this really could be a catalyst for change. Mayor, you mentioned about opening up the toolbox. Well, let's continue to open up this toolbox to make this project work because other cities who are going through things very similar to Lansing with an increase in crime, um, housing prices becoming unaffordable and people are not able to buy those first homes. My husband and I, we bought our first home right up the street from this school. We want to make sure that this area remains accessible and safe and has safe schools and services for the families who live there. So if we, again, if we can come together and everyone work this out, figure out ways to find win-win wins, then it will definitely be a win for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Luna Brown, followed by Kyle Richard.
Hello, thanks everyone for being here. Um, I'd just like to say, uh, I think it's great that there is an ordinance to create a diversity equity and inclusion uh, board. It's long past due and I think it's kind of needed in every modern city in America. Um, my concern with this though is that I'm afraid that it could be just a superficial board as some of these have a tendency to end up being. And I'd like it to, to just ensure that it truly is a diverse board that actually serves a purpose and has a real voice in the city. Um, and that it is made up of just truly diverse people. I'm transgender, I'm autistic, and I have a severe mental illness. And most people, when they see me, they just see a white male and they don't understand that there are many invisible disabilities. There's many different forms of diversity and I want to see a true representation of many different groups within this uh, board to have true representation across a broad spectrum and truly make our city a more inclusive and diverse place. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kyle Richard, followed by Kessley Hudson, Kelsey Hudson.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Uh, I'm going to speak on a few items. I'm just going to go in the order of the agenda. Uh, item seven, uh, I definitely think like housing for veterans is good. Um, it was weird to watch y'all kind of go goo-goo over something that's 80% parking lot and has no sustainability plan. Um, it, I, if we're going to build something for the future, for the long term, let's think about renewable energy, please. The number nine, uh, diversity equity inclusion board. Uh, I appreciate what Luna just shared. Um, last meeting, some of y'all took turns sharing which identities you thought should be represented. I felt the one major one that was left out was class, uh, income, educational attainment. These things matter just as much, if not more. Um, and uh, it's really up to this council to, to make those decisions because Mayor Shore is going to bring whoever he brings and it's going to be up to y'all to, to say no when it's time to say no. The uh, and I guess one other point on that, Councilman Bur Jackson mentioned something about the mindset that matters. And I think that that's important too because, you know, this could be, you know, in all, all appearances, the, the most diverse board in the history of the city of Lansing, history of the world. But uh, if they all work at the Chamber of Commerce, what kind of decisions are they going to make? Who, who's going to benefit from the kind of decisions that they make? The uh, item 14, Lansing Police Department Justice Assistance Grant Acceptance. Um, me personally, I feel like the Lansing Police Department has more than enough money to do the job that they need to do. Uh, coming from the field of education, I would say that's a, you know, you can work with what you got. Uh, you will get by, we always do. Um, and you know, that doesn't mean that we can't demand that they still, you know, I know that this money is for, you know, the speed speeding, you know, speed meters. And I know that that's an important, that was something that was discussed tonight. Um, you can still ask for that, you know, and if, if the response is, well, you know, you expect us to do more with less? No, we expect you to do less with less. All right, because what the Lansing Police Department is currently doing is actively hurting this community. The uh, item 18, uh, requires owners of firearms to report theft and penalties, uh, penalizes those who don't. I think this policy is very reactionary and I think it places the burden on the individual rather than on the city. Uh, I think that it places the burden on the victim of a crime. And so not only did you, were you the victim of a crime, you now have to do paperwork about it. And so uh, if you want to end gun violence in this city, um, you, you're not going to beat it into submission with the baton or with bureaucracy. If you want to reduce gun violence in this city, we need to think about meeting people's needs. We need to think about prioritizing roofs over heads, food and stomachs, access to quality healthcare and mental healthcare, parks, public facilities and programming that are accessible to poor and working class people. And this ordinance, as it currently stands, uh, only perpetuates the overpolicing that is already happening in our city. And so to, to even consider this ordinance, uh, is to really just continue the same, same problem we've been having this whole time. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelsey Hudson, followed by Ian Highsop.
Um, good evening. My name is Kelsey. I am a clear and disabled woman of God with a calling on my life to be an advocate. Um, just a few things here. Um, why are we increasing the tennis fees for the parks and rec? Um, I know that is later in the agenda or kind of towards the end, but that seems like it makes it a little less accessible for the working class to actually enjoy our parks and rec, um, which we have some amazing things here, but it seems like increasing that fee would be kind of an odd step. Um, why are we asking for more grant funding for policing when the police funding takes a significant portion of our budget? Um, why is that funding going in that direction when it could be going towards social programs or things that were, um, that has been taken off? Um, I am currently encouraged slightly with guarded hope about the introduction in that grant of um, more social workers and a social work supervisor. Um, I think that personally, I'm a fan of defunding and divesting the police and that is one tiny step, which is heading towards more social workers and more social programming. Um, the one that I wanted to speak on particularly, um, is the diversity inclusion, sorry, diversity equity inclusion board. Um, it needs to be as transparent and not held up by non-disclosure agreements as that is why the last one of it kind of was dissolved. Um, Mayor Shore, you ran on transparency and we behold you accountable for that. As a city council, sorry, as a city, we cannot heal without accountability from those who have caused harm. Unfortunately, it seems that quite a few of those individuals are currently as board. I have guarded hope and will hold you accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian Highsop. The last speaker for this portion.
Thanks. Highsop is right. Um, hi, uh, yeah, I basically just wanted to speak tonight about the police funding and uh, some folks have mentioned around uh, police and safety and rising crime, which uh, really is kind of a smokescreen around how community safety actually looks. Um, basically, I'm opposed to police funding, even for things like speed traps. So that, I'll keep it short, please.
All right, referral to public hearings. We have the Brownfield.
Hold on one second. Uh, Mr. Samirko.
I wanted to follow up on Council Woods' question, Council, um, Vice President Woods' question that was at the presentation. So that the purchase agreement not only has a contingency in it for uh, missed tax credits, but it's totally within, within the control of the purchaser. In other words, that's, it uses the word adequate, uh, which is determined only by the purchaser. It also has a contingency in it, uh, of financing. So the purchaser has to get adequate, fi- uh, secure construction financing and tax credit investment in adequate amounts. And then there's a similar clause for environmental. So what I'm, is that is, the purchaser has the right to terminate based upon the purchaser's conclusion that none of those things have been met. There is a, what we would call a drop dead date, but it isn't until 2023. So in other words, it's totally within the control of the purchaser. Uh, I'm told by the clerk that this has been on file for 30 days.
At least.
So if this comes back on the agenda, you can act on it next week or two weeks from now.
Thank you.
Okay, then we're to the referral to public hearings. Brownfield Plan 80.
Development and planning.
Act 1, 2022.
Development and planning.
Ordinance to create diversity equity inclusion advisory board.
Equity, diversity and inclusion.
And special assessment for Glenburn Commons Trash and Grass Abatement.
City operations.
We are next to the consent agenda.
All right, Vice President Wood. Did you, did you want to address it now?
I'll just pull it.
Go right ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
I, I will defer to, there's only one item. I'll defer to.
That, that works as well.
The chair of the um, Ways and Means.
All right, so the item has been pulled and we will address that. We can actually address that right at the top if you want to.
So it's the next item.
So there is no consent agenda.
There is no consent agenda and the fees and non-resident tax, tennis fees.
Certainly. And so the confusion was, we were going to um, address this during uh, committee reports and uh, Councilman Spatafor was going to report out from Ways and Means in terms of some of the things that was discussed today. Uh, but this makes probably a little bit more sense in terms of transparency. Uh, so with that being said, Councilman Spatafor.
Sure, first I'll move the resolution and then discuss real quick. We did talk about this with the Parks Director this evening, um, at Ways and Means Meeting, uh, 4:30 this afternoon. The fees are actually only changing for non-residents. So they're going up um, from $30 to $35 for non-residents for the summer tennis. The uh, NJTL Quick Start Program, which is the, I can't remember, it's the Todd, uh, the Todd Martin, yeah, Todd Martin program. And then the tutoring fees are going from $110 for non-residents for 12 weeks to $130 for non-residents for the 12-week program. And the reason we're looking at doing this is we have relatively high participation, participation rates in the tennis program.
Can I stop you just for a minute?
Yeah.
We're having a little bit of, folks in the gallery, we're having a little bit of difficulty hearing up here. So if you don't mind, maybe taking the conversations from the gallery, uh, into the back hallway, we'd certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so for those that were interested in that, we are actually raising the fees on non-residents to ensure that the rates stay low for our residents. Um, that's what we're doing there. So the resolution, I, I make the motion.
All right, there is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Yep, um, yep, grant accepted, Lansing Police Department, JAG grant.
Fantastic. Uh, Councilman Spatafor.
Yeah, I'll move the resolution first and then um, it was pointed out that there was a number of expenditures that we were looking at using with this. It is a $124,000 grant. Uh, the Lansing Police Department will receive $110,644 from that and Ingham County will receive $13,674. Uh, they will be using that, those dollars to purchase body cams for some of the Sheriff's Department officers. The plan for the Lansing Police Department share is to use about $83,000 to purchase software and hardware to essentially, what do they call it, gray box? Is that the name of the program? To be able to analyze the contents of iPhones. Um, and we did check with our city attorney, though, only with warrants will they be able to do that. But right now, the only vendor in the state that has access to that technology is the Michigan State Police Department. And the backlog is so far that we're having trouble um, clearing some of those crimes where the iPhone is used as evidence. So this will allow us to process those um, searches of iPhones and other, other cell phones for that matter, but iPhones specifically, in a more expeditious way. As well as the purchase of two, which Councilmember Wood and Councilmember Garza are very ecstatic about this, uh, two new uh, speed trailers for the police department. Not for Andy Calpatrick over in public service. These are actually for uh, traffic calming and uh, not the traffic study portion that public services them for, but they are, they'll be designed to help slow down traffic. And we're currently looking, now, we, I'm not doing it. The police department is currently looking at uh, different models that will perhaps allow for tracking of when there are the most uh, people violating the speed limit, which will allow um, actual enforcement officers to be placed at times of higher violations of traffic law as well as the potential for um, some ability to track which vehicles are the, the largest offenders. So if they, it could be a, perhaps a reminder in neighborhoods to slow down and those types of things. They can't under state law be used to issue citations, but they can help um, inform uh, who are our, our biggest offenders in the areas where we're seeing the worst offenses on speeding. So this will help with a discussion we had earlier this morning, uh, this morning, feels like this morning. Um, earlier this evening when Rep. Anthony was talking about uh, speed limit laws and things like that. But um, it is not, uh, this is, this is a grant, it's not uh, operational dollars. So we'll spend it on things that will help us improve operations.
All right, did you move the resolution?
I did, yes, sir.
All right, there is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Right, next we're to Teamster Local 243 Clerical, Technical, Professional Union's contract.
Vice President Wood.
Uh, thank you, President Hussein. Um, the first resolution that we have before us has to do, deal with the ratification of Teamsters Local 243 Clerical. Uh, this is a contract that would uh, cover the periods of February 1st, 2022 through uh, January 31st, 2025. Um, some of the highlights um, within the contract is there were um, some additional holidays that were added um, to the paid holiday. One is um, Juneteenth. There were um, four weeks of maternal uh, parental um, leave. Um, so whether you were um, having a baby or adopting, uh, that this gave you four weeks for that. Uh, there was also a signing bonus for um, full-time employees of $1,000 and for part-time employees of $500. The uh, there is a 3% for the first year wage increase and for the second year, another 3%. And then the final year would be able to be opened. And then the final year would be able to be opened again to, to look at, to determine what our financial status was and, and where things were at that point. There's also a section that was added talking about customer service as part of their responsibility. So, with that, I would move the collective bargaining for a local 243 clerical.
Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right, next we're to the Supervisory Unit Contract.
And that's a mirror image of what I just explained. So, I would move the Teamsters Local 243 Supervisory Unit. And again, with the explanation that I gave for the clerical, and I would move that at this time.
All right. There's a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right, next to the United Auto Workers Memo of Understanding.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. This is a memorandum of understanding with the United Auto Workers Local 2256. This is regarding an extension of voluntary opt-in deadlines for healthcare savings plan. This would be based on a 4% for those that would be opting into this program. The union, it's our understanding, came to the administration asking for an opportunity for those that missed the deadline to be able to participate in this opt-in program. So, with that, I would move the memorandum of understanding.
There is a motion pertaining to the memorandum of understanding. Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
So, next, understand, we have a report from a council committee?
Nope, we already took it.
We do not. Okay. Then next, we are the ordinance for introduction. I'll read into the record the ordinance. The ordinance of City Lansing, Michigan, to amend Chapter 696, Section 696.07 to provide requirements for owners of firearms, report the theft thereof and provide penalties for failure to make a report. Ordinance was introduced by Vice President Wood, read for the first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Public Safety.
All right, we do have Vice President Wood that will report out on this, but we also have Chief Sosby.
Yes.
So, of course, we're going to invite him down into the well as well.
Thank you, and I appreciate the fact that the chief stayed here, the, for the entire meeting to address council members if they had any questions on this. This ordinance was brought to us by the mayor's office. And as we look at a number of strategies that the city has attempted in order to deal with gun violence in our communities, this is one more of those tools. Currently, there is a state statute that requires the theft of a firearm to be reported to the state. Unfortunately, the state does not report that information to the city. It is our understanding during the committee process that only one time has this information been transmitted to the city. And, and part of this is, again, being a responsible owner of a firearm. The idea that when we look at the number of weapons that have been confiscated in our community and knowing that there is a percentage, a large percentage of those that have been stolen, not only locally, but across the United States, and then so, again, you know, we have to look at ways that we can address that. So, having given you this precursor, I would like to turn it over to the chief for added remarks and then if the mayor wishes to add in anything after that. Chief.
Thank you, Vice President Wood. Well, I just wanted to, to touch base and make sure that everybody understood the importance of this. We know that guns are a large source of violence in our city and stolen guns are a big source of that. We'd like to see this ordinance passed because there's a, you know, more than just another ordinance on the books. We view it as an educational piece with possible outcomes that, you know, could prevent injury and death. It's also a reminder that for those that have weapons, to make sure they know where they're at, that they're secured and out of reach of children. We're not looking to, to place the hardship on a victim of a gun crime or a gun theft. However, we do have found recently that many guns are not necessarily secured properly. They're in the hands of young children that don't know how to handle the weapon appropriately. And we know how those typically end. This ordinance will help us assist with potential, identifying potential suspects, builds information that may lead to and obtain focused information on those involved. And we, we want to take it one step further than what pride sometimes gets in our way when weapons, what we have found in law enforcement, when your weapon is lost or stolen, pride steps in and doesn't allow people to notify the authorities. And this will be an encouragement to them based on a little bit more than just peer pressure and doing the right thing. So, again, we want to make sure that this isn't a punitive ordinance. We want to make sure that this is a way for the police department and the city to gain information and gain that accountability on those weapons, because as we know, there are so many in, in the city and in the state and the country these days. And we want to make sure that the, the ones that are there are, are safely stored and at least, the very least, you know, the gun owners know where they are. Thank you.
Mayor Schor, I don't know if you have any comments you'd like to add?
Well, and thank you, Councilwoman Wood, I'm just a Madam Chair. Yeah, this is, I don't want to repeat what Chief Sosby said. I do want to indicate, you know, this isn't, this isn't the end-all, be-all to solve the problem. But as we all know, local government is almost completely preempted from, from passing anything dealing with guns. That's a whole different issue. That's something at the state legislature and I know State Representative Sarah Anthony and Senator Curtis Hertel are very aware. But this is something we can do and this is something that I believe that we should do. I thank Councilwoman Wood and the committee for taking this up quickly and vetting this thoroughly. And I think this is, this is common sense, being able to, to have folks report so that our police department know how many guns are on the streets, or at least some idea of how many guns are on the street. We took 580 guns up the streets through our violent crime initiative last year, which was double what we took off the year before. Being able to have an idea of what's out there and what we're facing and being able to, to make sure that, that gun owners are responsible. You know, I don't have a problem with, with gun ownership at all. I have a problem with people who are not responsible in gun ownership. So, I think this is, this is a good common sense solution and again, I appreciate the, the, the quick attention to this from when it was introduced. Thank you.
So, what I'm looking for is, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, at this point, one other point I would like to add is we will be setting, I will be making a motion to set the public hearing for March 14th. Also, because of the importance of this particular ordinance and the fact that we need to make sure that it is in effect as soon as possible, we will also, the same night as the public hearing, be voting on this ordinance unless there is a significant input from the public that would make a change to that. So, not only would we be passing, having the public hearing on the 14th, we would be passing it on the 14th. So, with that, I would move the setting of the public hearing.
Thank you so much, and that's what I was looking for. There is a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Councilman Spatafor.
Yeah, thank you. First, thanks to the mayor for bringing this up, chief, for your involvement in making sure that this came to us quickly and the committee for their work on it. I have a couple of questions since we are moving quickly. I'm supportive of everything that's going on here, but the policy nerd in me, is days defined somewhere else in code as to be weekdays, workdays? Where's that going? And then is there, is there a definition of firearm? Are we talking, is there in code that would specify, for instance, probably not talking about a child's BB gun or that kind of stuff? But is there, are those definitions clear somewhere in code? I don't need the answers tonight, but this will go back to committee, so just the committee to consider those.
We, actually, on Thursday, we will have this again before the public safety committees, so we will get those answers for you.
Thank you.
Is that it?
It is.
All right. Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Peter, for those, because those are good questions. I think it's important for us to make sure we get this right because it is important. At the press conference that, I think it was right before the holidays, we talked, and it was a press conference on, on violence, and we talked about, you know, doing whatever we can and using whatever tools we have in our toolbox to try to address violent crime. And again, you know, it isn't the end-all, the be-all, and it is not to punish, you know, the victim, but it is to hold gun owners accountable. I'm, I'm a gun owner. I have licensed firearms and, you know, I know where they are and if they're stolen, I'm going to report. That's all we're asking. And, and those two things will go a long way as part of a larger strategy to address gun violence. And so, I appreciate, you, you said at the time at the press conference that you were going to introduce this, and I appreciate you, chief, for supporting it. Again, it is just critically important that we use whatever tools we can to try to address this. So, thank you, everybody.
And I would, I would echo those sentiments. Councilman Spatafor.
Yeah, I'm sorry to speak again, but I just, I wanted to highlight something. This body, sometimes as policymakers, I always ask this question, I think Dave Accrily asked it at one point, not the same interview where he asked me every other question, but was what we can do for gun violence. And the mayor, I think you really hit the nail on the head. It's, it's hard for this body to figure out what our role is in a, in an environment where Congress and the legislature failed to act. So, this is one of those things, but also the county government just approved the contract for advanced peace, which the mayor proposed money, this body appropriated money for. So, these are all part of layered approaches to helping curb the epidemic of gun violence in this community. So, yes, you're right, Councilmember Spitzley, not one single thing is going to be the answer, the end-all, the be-all, but I applaud, not to pat ourselves on the back, but I'm really proud of the work that we're doing to try and piece together the policy solutions that we can as, as a city council and a, and a city government to, to solve this problem and try to solve this problem the best we can. So, we'll have a lot more to say, I'm sure, when, when we end up passing the motion, but I'm glad to see this moving. And I know we're not done thinking about solutions, but every one of them that's come toward us, I think we've been very good at trying to get something put together in a layered approach to, to gun violence in our community.
And I think I appreciate the fact that there's a commitment to kind of the short and long game. And so, when we look at advanced peace and we look at ordinances such as this, this gets after, you know, some of the problem immediately. But even tonight, I mean, we've talked about economic development and job growth and appropriate housing and the list goes on and on and on. A little bit, you know, that is a little bit more of the, kind of the long game aspect when we talk about solutions. And sometimes that can be frustrating because we know that, that might not bear fruit for 10, 15, 20 years down the line, but we can't lose sight of those things as well. So, I appreciate the comprehensive question, or I'm sorry, comprehensive conversation as well. That being said, there is a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right, next we're speaker registration, public comments, city government related matters. For anyone to speak on city government related matters, you have a few moments to get with Jessica to fill out the yellow sheet. Otherwise, we are on to reports of city officer boards and commissions.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you. I would move that all items be considered as being read in full and that the proper referrals be made by you, Mr. President.
There is a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right. Items from the city clerk, minutes of boards and commission, place on file.
Place on file.
Reports of board commission authorities' term expirations.
Place on file.
City of Lansing Comprehensive Annual Financial Report Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2021.
Place on file.
Items from the mayor, Soul Surro's Purchase, Request for Detroit Pump and Manufacturing Company as a vendor for purchase of parts and freight for rebuild Worthington South Return Pump 23.
Ways and means.
We have a grant application for MDOT for local bridge programs.
Ways and means.
Development District Liquor License for Strange Matter Old Town LLC.
City operations.
Development District Liquor License for Strange Matter Coffee Downtown LLC.
City operations.
Grant application of Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund.
Ways and means.
Appointment of Joe Sinha as a business owner, member of the North Grand River Corridor Improvement Authority.
Development and planning.
We have appointment Steve Bonnet as a business owner, member of the North Grand River Corridor Improvement Authority.
Development and planning.
Diane Hartwell as a resident member of North Grand River Corridor Improvement Authority.
Development and planning.
Mary Alyssa Gonzalez as a business owner, member of North Grand River Corridor Improvement Authority.
Development and planning.
And then we have the collective bargaining agreements for the Teamsters Clerical and the Supervisory Unit.
Both, Committee of the Hall, place on file.
Then we have communication petition, affidavit disclosure for Jessica Martin, Lansing Police Department.
Ethics board.
Then we have two affidavit disclosures for Joseph Bechala of the Lansing Police Department.
Ethics board.
Then we have claim appeal, Claim 1879 from Gerald Phillips for $3,758 in trash violations at 4805 Pleasant Grove Road.
City operations.
Then we have the claim appeals, 1888, David Hall, for $2,828 in trash violation fees at 333 North Martin Luther King Boulevard.
City operations.
And no excuse absent. So, remarks by council members.
Do we have a, sorry, any other remarks or comments from council members? Seeing none.
Remarks by the mayor?
Mayor Schor?
All right, then, public comments, city government related matters. You have three minutes to speak on any city-related matters. First speaker is Nicholas Zandi, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Nicholas Wayne Zandi. I'm here to speak about a certain matter that my dad had to discuss with me earlier. My dad was out for a run with his dog and when he ran past Moore's Park, he noticed a complete lack of trash cans in the park. I don't know if every single park in this city has the same problem, but I do know that there needs to be a law that requires that every single park in the city of, run by the city of Lansing, has at least one trash can for the sake of the environment, because we really only have a limited time to address the climate crisis. And addressing the litter and the lack of trash cans in parks needs to be addressed right about now. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Karina Randall.
Just a few quick things tonight. First off, on the millage, I would like to say that even though I have never had children in the school system, I am in support of the millage. I do think that for the purposes of complete transparency, it would be appropriate, though, to say that even though it's called a zero millage because the taxes won't increase, conversely, we need to say, if you didn't pass this, for the next 25 years, your taxes would go down. So, I think that's an aspect that needs to be mentioned at the very least. Second, I would like to thank the council. I've been observing you particularly for the last few weeks that you've been in session, and I truly appreciate the fact that you're paying attention. You're not on your phones, you're not on your laptops, you're not eating or drinking, you're listening to the constituents, you're listening to each other. And I would say, thank you, hurrah, it's about time. I'm really glad to see that. Also, I'm glad to see, as Mr. Ferguson alluded, to the level of cooperation that is existing currently on the council versus the levels of conflict that used to be very ordinary. And then lastly, there's been talk a lot lately about the idea of doing something with city hall. It's an idea that's been kicked around for a long time. There's a lot of thoughts on pros and cons. In general, I am not in support of taking away from the current location and relocating the city hall. However, I realize that there could be opportunities there that might make it worth doing. Mister, I think he pronounces, his name, Beetle, Vital, at the last go-around, I thought his proposal was the best, but I think that there are other opportunities too to consider even in addition to that, sort of a hybrid model. His was talking about a restaurant and hotel and then relocating city hall. I'm not sure we have to do a relocating of the city hall to improve the building. There's been talk that we don't need all 10 floors. There's been talk that we don't need all 10 floors. Perhaps we could consolidate down to, say, five or six floors, and then develop the other floors into high-level, expensive penthouse-style apartments with parking underneath, as currently is used by city council members, for one, but could be used by residents. Or the second option might be to convert the entire building into high-level, expensive apartments with a couple of top-floor penthouses. You're talking about the primest piece of real estate in the city. If it's going to be used in any way other than its current way, we need to maximize that use and get minimum expenditure and maximum income from it. Apartments paid for by the residents would be a steady income stream for the city. Penthouses would be an easy sale, I would think, given the location, and I just think it's time to think outside the box a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Karina Randall.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I hate to be that resident, but I arrived home from work on Tuesday and received my notice of a tax assessment where it increased my property taxes almost by double. I called the city assessor, and to my surprise, she pulled up my real estate listing that was still up and noticed my kitchen was updated. That's not true. The seller was a landlord who pretty much just spray painted over everything just to offload it. She noticed my basement was finished. That's not true. It's just received an extra coat of paint and new carpeting. Then she brought up that the exterior had been enhanced, kind of updating the house from what it looked like from 1952. We're in 2022, of course. All the seller did was rip out bushes. It upsets me. I've only lived here for six months in that neighborhood. I have a number of vacant homes. I called code enforcement regarding the vacant home. No one called me back. This was back in December. The issue I have with the tax increase is reciprocity. If I'm going to pay increased taxes, my street shouldn't be riddled in potholes. I dodge potholes coming in and out of my driveway. I have neighbors who don't upkeep their yard. No one comes to get them. No one has been able to explain to me the reason for the significant increase. I'm looking at a $959 increase. That's a lot. And when I talk to people in other municipalities, nowhere near $959. So with this tax increase should come some accountability and responsiveness from the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Very quickly, Vice President Wood.
Yes, ma'am. Did, ma'am, did anyone tell you in the assessor's office about the Board of Review?
I have a hearing March 14th.
Okay.
And I put it on my calendar, but the issue that I'm concerned with is, even when I go before the Board of Review, I'm concerned, are they even going to lower it? And then another issue I have is, it was a rental. So, I mean, I'm convinced, based off what I received in the mail, God knows how long the property had not been properly assessed. I think the seller purchased it, Sheriff's sale, 2010. And so I'm convinced that assessments aren't happening routinely, and to pass that cost on to a homeowner, I'd rather have you heavily tax a landlord, constant revenue. I mean, this guy had six other properties in the neighborhood and multiple tenants. During COVID, he just did what anybody did during this real estate market, just to offload his properties. And like I said, anyone is welcome from the city to come and look at my home. I mean, literally spray painted, it's not even new cabinets. And she's like, oh, you have updated cabinets? I'm like, no. He just spray painted over the handles, this cheap linoleum that is lifting. I mean, the kitchen was not updated. The appliances were not new when I moved in. It was a rental. So to pass that cost off to me, and I don't mean to get passionate and upset, but at the end of the day, I could have took my money and went to East Lansing, Hasslet in Okemis, and had a more, better police response time, a neighborhood where my neighbors upkept their yard, potholes. My street should be paved in gold at this price.
And I appreciate your comments. I just wanted to make sure that you were in the process for the Board of Review so that you can make your plea there, so.
And another thing, I emailed my council member who did not email me back. I got my start in services. Even if I didn't know the answer or I didn't have time, all, hey, I got your message. Hey, I just, just want to let you know, thank you for sharing. So at the end of the day, I carved out time to be here today. I don't mean to be passionate, but like I said, when I'm talking to my neighbors who have lived in that neighborhood for 10, 15 years, and they say they have experienced a tax increase every single year, you're boxing people out of their homes because it's tacked onto their mortgage.
Glad to talk to you.
Absolutely.
I'm your at-large council member, your.
I'm in Fourth Ward. I live on Highland Street. I'm assessable. Please reach out to me. Thank you.
Certainly, we certainly will. And as president of this body, I'll reach out to you as well. Thank you so much. With no other business before the body, we are adjourned at 9:36.